Can I all stand? Good God, we just want to thank you for bringing her this, bringing us here this evening and helping us conduct this business for our community. Just be with us as we hear the remarks and the ideas that they have for our community. We pray this in your name. Amen. I think everybody knows the commissioners, Martha Bowe, Steve Freeman, our city manager, Lake Barister, Jeff Baum, Bill Duncan, and Kelly Lee. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss our budget as we get ready to do our budget. The state of Kentucky requires the city to have a budget in place by July 1st. And the different ways that we distribute our money is one of the reasons that we have got this meeting this evening. The city is always giving money to different things through the years. And so, Steve, do you want to talk about how we go about planning our budget?
Well, we pretty much start by looking at what we're doing. It's just the first step in the process is budgeting for the existing programs and seeing how money's spent, how much everything's going to cost. But from there, we haven't explained that very well. The first step in the process actually is to get your input on what you want to see the city do, what directions we want to go, what policies we want to follow. Right now, at City Hall, we're taking a look at what we're doing and what it will cost to continue to do in the future. And we hear there's lots of ideas out there, and we're hoping to get those from you right now.
Steve has planned, has sent out to the departments, a four- or five-year plan that we're going to be working on in the next few months. And from that, we hope to have something in place that will take us through five years. So if you have, I know there's people here that we have given money to throughout the years in the past, so if you would like to speak at this time, I will ask you to stand up and say your name and let us know your request.
I'll go first.
Okay.
My name is Michael Burnett. I work here at Citizens Bank in Fulton. I'm also a partner in the keg and proud to say that my grandfather was the first person to bring pasteurized milk to this area, a pure milk company, which is Turner Dairy. My thing is, is I'm just going to sit down. I'm not a public speaker. There's an old saying, "You don't know where you're going." You don't know where you're going. If you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there. And I think we're at this point, citizen leaders and stakeholders in a high achieving community knows where they're going. We need to understand that it's an era of rapid social, cultural, and technological changes requiring a proactive approach to addressing current and future problems. This is why I'm asking the city to have a five-year strategic planning put in place, something like you're talking about now, because it's a necessary means. The result of a process of this strategic plan that identifies community priorities and outlines specific challenges to make best use of available assets and address local challenges. What stands out in a high achieving community are not much the characteristics of their leaders as their numbers, which we have proven with the Banana Festival, Let's Paint the Town, and the keg. When Christie Rogers and Jeff Campbell took on the task, they used a leadership model that recognizes that leadership is not confined to a few elected officials and business leaders. Rather, successful leadership requires mobilizing the knowledge, talents, and perspectives of every segment of the community and the community people. Broad-based community support is the foundation for this strategic plan. It is extremely important that the steering committee, which I think needs to be formed, be made up of a cross-section of the community, public and private leadership, existing order stations, twin-city chamber, industrial EDP, should be used when possible. The committee is responsible for forming the plan, communicating the plan to the community, and promoting the entire planning process. One of the most important functions of this steering committee after forming the plan is, which we had a problem with, is, is to establish a schedule to complete each phase of the plan and see it to, to each phase is completed. The schedule should allow significant time to complete each element and be flexible enough to allow for corrections. I think that what got the Banana Festival started, what got the keg started, with seven people just coming together, good people that want to get something done in this community, whether it's people that live in South Fulton or Hickman, it doesn't matter. If they have businesses here in Fulton, their voices should be heard just as much as anybody else's. And those people, we have very, very great people in this town, and we need to bring those together, and we've got to have a person to bring those together to put this plan together, because we've got to start there and then follow through with it. I mean, we did, I heard we did a thirty-year strategic plan at one time, and nobody knows where it is. Or we just didn't follow up on it. Or we need somebody to be, you know, a head person to do that. I think, I mean, you just don't know, you're just budgeting, how do you know if you don't know where you're going? And I think this is a great step, having this meeting, and I just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Burnett a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you see this, that the steering committee being the lead group can put that plan together under the leadership of a particular person, or should that group form its own leadership and report?
You've got to have a leader. I mean, when you did Let's Paint the Town, you know, Jeff Campbell just took off with it. I mean, you've got to have somebody that's going to lead that committee.
But that would be a member of that cross-section of the community and that...
It can be. Let's just see who steps up and says, "I will do it." You know, "I will step up and take that part on." We need somebody to do that. We need more leadership in this town. And we should accept everybody that comes up and voices their opinion. A lot of people have told me, "I'm crazy, you're crazy to go down and speak," because they won't listen. Or nothing will be done. I mean, it's just too many people, and I hope, I hope that's not taken today, and I hope the people that's going to speak, as myself, is heard, and, and things are corrected, and let's move on, because...
I think that's a great idea, Michael Don, and I certainly don't have a problem with it. And I think it's a good project for the Twin-City Chamber of Commerce, as it can work for both cities.
Absolutely.
At both cities. But I think there's enough leaders in your Twin-City Chamber of Commerce to form something like that, don't you think?
I think that's a good start. I think, you know, we could draw it off that. Draw it off that, and we'll ask the people on the board that want to be involved in it. If they want to be involved in it, that's great, even more. I know I do. And whoever wants to do that, it's fine. And then talk to South Fulton, if they want to be involved, let's talk with the, just talk with the community. Let's go to these businesses, very successful businesses, people, and ask them to come aboard. We need, and, you know, religious leaders. We need a broad base of everybody in our veins. I mean, we're kind of separate. It just seems like we're separate. The Twin-City Chamber, Tourism, the Manifesto, we're all separate. We're all one community. We're all four together. We're all tough, and we've got to work together to, if we're going to, if we're going to keep this going.
Well, I think you'd go to your, go to your Chamber of Commerce and see what you can get started.
Absolutely, I'm sure.
I agree completely with you, but it's out of our jurisdiction here, it's the city commission. I think you need to start the Chamber of Commerce and then work with Tourism together.
For, for a five-year strategic plan for, for the budget in the city?
Well, there could be members off this committee, on your committee, but the city of Fulton runs the city of Fulton. We don't...
No.
We don't contribute any monies to that, but the Tourism...
Well, I guess, if I may say, you know, I don't know that it's our function this evening to put detailed structure to it. I think Mr. Burnett is saying that through the auspices of a group of interested citizens and the leadership of the commission, we need to put something in place to develop a five-year plan, and I agree, that's a...
And have a follow-through.
Yes, sure.
This is how it works, dark.
And I think, I think we should, I appreciate your thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Michael Don. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dave Paulinger, about a landlord in the area.
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned, you were talking about budget.
Yes, sir.
He's talking about strategy and projects, which are great. Are we in the red? Are we in the black? How far are we either way? Next year's budget, are you looking forward to having excess funds, so you can do a lot? I doubt that. Or are you not having anywhere near enough? Are you going to have to do cuts?
I'm not exactly sure where we're at. Well, over the next couple of weeks, we'll have a much better idea of where things stand. You know, this is, being a municipal budget, there's lots of limitations on how you can spend money, and there's different kinds of funds. And the sources of these funds determines what you're allowed to do. So we have a general fund, and the general fund is used for, is mainly funded by taxes and licenses, fees, and grants, and those sorts of things. And then you have business-type funds, they're called proprietary funds, enterprise funds, which is like the sewer, the water, and the gas. And those are mainly, you know, those are funded through user charges. And those are pretty much, once they're set up, as they are now, they're kind of pay-as-you-go. So the general fund can be used for, is used for stuff like police, fire, code enforcement, and parks, and it's used for economic development, community development efforts. So there are certain, as I go through the budget and I get the department, I look at, you know, take a closer look at how, where the money's coming from and what our reserves are in the different funds, and what our projected needs are, because we might need to do some more work on our sewer, our water treatment facility, and those sorts of things. And there's a, and there's all sorts of restrictions on using one fund, you know, like the general fund, you really can't use it to pay for the utility fund and vice versa. So I think that we can continue, we can probably continue at the current level of activity. We've made, the commission's made a lot of progress this year, taken lots of action. So I think that we're going to be okay, but I think it's going to be a matter of prioritizing, you know? If we spend, if we want to spend more in one area, if we're talking about the general fund, we'd probably have to take it from another. And I think that's...
So are we break-even then? The black, we're not in the private industry, and every quarter we had to report to the shareholders, we made a profit of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, we lost a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I would be able to give you a lot better idea in the next couple of weeks. I think there were certain issues with the budget last year, so, and we made drastic changes to our operations. So couldn't tell you right now we're in the red or the black. I'm pretty confident we have adequate reserves in our general fund.
That's awesome.
You know, that, that I am. I'm a little more concerned about that our utility fund reserves are kind of low, given the old infrastructure that exists here, so we have to look at that. But I'm confident the general fund is...
All right. Do you have some kind of structure? In other words, they told me I was the department head, and okay. You're cutting ten percent, and you're going to do that by Monday, so that we're profitable.
Well, it's not, you know, there's a, that's why, you know, the budget's an important document for the, for municipal government, because basically it's the roadmap, the blueprint, and how we're going to spend money for the next year. And I don't, we haven't had any specific discussions of, you know, along those lines.
Typically, what they tell us is, all right, you have to submit your budget. If it's not on the budget, you're not going to get it. And then when you apply for it, you have to justify it again.
We're trying to assess what the needs of the departments are at this point.
That's what he's doing right now. He has sent our chief of the department heads to prioritize.
So you're asking us to make suggestions where we're going to spend the money, or how it concerns...
Give us some kind of suggestion you'd like, sir.
One, one thing this meeting is for is to, it's a meeting to get input from the public to see, of course, our department heads, they're going to ask for what they want. They're going to ask for what they need. And we do this every year with the department heads. This year, we're taking a different route and trying to get some input from the public. Is there anything the public would like to, to see us put into the budget or maybe take out of the budget, so?
I think you've heard me before. I see some of these derelict properties disappear. They're totally unstable. There's a couple of trees that are so dead they're going to fall over on the walls of somebody else's house. The sidewalk's are in terrible state of repair in many, many places.
We do have sidewalk money available if the owner wants to go habits with, isn't that correct, Bubba? I'm doing it, I'm redoing their sidewalk.
I don't really like to hand him, but I think you also wanted us to sign a commitment from then on in perpetuity is my problem. In other words, if you and I work together and I pay half to fix the sidewalk, from then on, it's my responsibility.
I don't know, is that correct, Bubba?
Yes.
I don't want to be responsible for the sidewalks.
Well, you know, we've got to get rid of the properties. I'm as concerned about the property as you are, and we do not have a code enforcement officer, and I don't know that we will have a code enforcement officer, so I don't know how we're going to take care of those planes. But we do have a list of homes that we would like to see tended to, and I want us to get on that as soon as possible. They will have to go through the courts to do that.
It should be a priority. Obviously, our attorney, Steve, she...
Yes, she's here. She's hiding back there somewhere.
Hi, yeah. Good. I think we should start giving some revenue to these people if they won't take care of their property.
We would love to have some revenue from the people.
Code enforcement, I don't see how you can not have. I bring in my place as a code, and in some instances, it's absurd. We've got people out there that have fuse boxes with oversized fuses, pennies in it, wired, spliced with masking tape. And nothing is being done about those people. I had to put in a new power panel, and they required me to put in, what do you call it? Arc fault breakers. Cost me an extra thousand dollars to put that panel in. The city should have been thrilled if I was willing to put breakers and get rid of the crap that was there.
Absolutely.
So I want code enforcement, but I don't want rigid code enforcement. I'd like to see that it's not really, really distressing. The properties where people are putting tile on the roof for patching leaks, which to my, to my understanding is against code, it's illegal, it's a fire hazard. And it goes on all the time. It's been going on, it's known about.
I would have, one of the things we're faced with is we're required to have a structurally sound, balanced budget, and assuming that basically we're just, all the taxes and fees and everything we collect pays for the existing services, do you have any ideas?
Permits.
What?
Permits.
There, there's just limited amount of building going on, and it would cost...
There's not a limited amount of construction, remodeling.
But the cost of funding it, I would say, would probably need to come out, you know? Basically, without, we have a limited ability to expand the pie, and in the, I don't know how many homes have been built over the last several years, but not many.
Very, very few, but not many have had major reconstruction, have been remodeled, have put new fixtures in, have, yeah, those type of things. I'm, I'm going to have to pay for that permit, so I don't want to have huge, massive fees. But it should be able to be self-sustaining. A code enforcement officer, ten, twenty bucks an hour, it should be doable.
About permits written down here, okay?
Well, Mayor, I have, I have Mr. Dave's suggestion. And I don't think our role here is to debate one way or the other, but we have invited these people to tell us what they would like. I hear Mr. Dave saying to deal with the derelict properties.
Absolutely.
To deal with sidewalks, to look at sources of revenue in that regard, to deal with the code enforcement officer, and perhaps consider permits.
Permits.
And those are good ideas, and I, I think that's what this meeting is about, to get those ideas.
That's correct.
Whether we can afford to do all that or not, is another question, but I do appreciate your ideas. All right. Any of these, we... Don't ever say that. Shut up, let somebody else talk. Make the people pay who are responsible for the derelicts. It shouldn't cost the city anything. Okay? Thank you.
Alton, that would be going to court?
Yes. We think going to court, and the problem with that is that usually these cases involve either foreclosure by the city or condemnation by the city, both of which are expensive processes there. You have to be filed in circuit court. Part of the problem is that the majority of these, we did a mass foreclosure a year or two ago, and we filed on, I believe, forty-three parcels of property, left the majority of those people. We had an overwhelming amount of landowners that did not even respond. Those individuals are difficult to locate, and the city really is not in the situation financially, to the best of my knowledge, that they want to go, that they want to get in the business of taking on these properties. Now, if you go through foreclosure and no one responds, and they default on it, then you're left with the master permissioner from the county selling that property at the courthouse steps. If no one bids on it, including the city, then the city's gaining on ground. And that has happened to us. It happened to us in the mass foreclosure.
I'll bid on some of them.
You'll bid on some of them. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have a question. So did the city, that money, that reminder, and I'm a landlord myself, did the city just get rid of the code enforcement, or?
He resigned.
He resigned, so...
We don't know if we're going to replace, we just don't know at this point in time what we're going to do about that, that one.
So when it's time to rent a house or something?
The fire chief is taking care of that. He and the assistant fire chief are doing the inspections.
Okay.
Okay? Okay? Yes, Eric?
Gary Luntz, I'm going to come up for him.
No, come.
I do. It's kind of, I'm sorry I dressed this way, I've been working all afternoon. Oh, my third grade PowerPoint, face this. It illustrated to you just a few things that if you had any money left over in your budget, I would like to see money put forward. And they're mostly aesthetic changes in the town, pleasing to the eye, in other words. First, I will talk, or point, I'll start from down through and explain kind of one of these pictures really quick. This is basically a picture of the interstate right here with lighting.
Yep.
I believe that is a huge, very significant thing that we're totally missing the boat on. And I believe that money ought to be, or letters, whatever we need to do, this ought to be a string of, we've got fourteen thousand cars a day, bypassing the city seventy mile an hour. What can we do to get some of them off the parkway into the town? I believe we ought to look into, towards money, towards tourism signs and historic downtown Fulton. I see this in cities all across, interstates and parkways, states all over. But signage, and definitely lighting, the lighting issue, I don't know the traffic count during the nighttime hours, but it's probably pretty amazing. And I would be glad to help out with this in any way as a citizen, I know you all have got your plates full.
Gary, aren't you talking about the sign to get off the interstate? Is that what we've talked about many times before?
The sign to get off.
No, I'm talking about the lighting.
Yes, well, I've got a...
Every exit sign.
On the, on the freeway.
Yeah.
Correct. You're correct. And we've got three exits. Of course, I'm just focusing on exit number one, because that's our fifty-one, that's where our hospital, our, most of our business commerce is on that exit. If we have to put money, allocate money towards that as a deposit, I don't know what the state requires. I wrote letters to them in the past, but we need to write letters to them, talk to business owners, Wendy's, McDonald's, Walmart, they'll all be glad to do that, because if we can get lighting at night, if we can get those people off the interstate at night in your town, there're going to be more out to spend money. So it's going to be a good oral on whatever you spend towards this project. Once you get off the interstate, we've got three points of interest in this town, three oh seven, fifty-one, and then I guess you call coming in from Union City, where three Js. Years ago, we used to have a really attractive entrance coming in from Tennessee, especially on the three J side. I believe they called it Isle of America back in the day. I would think a new, modern Isle of America should be developed, and I would say, go ahead and put it on the city property, but put it on your fifty-one exit, that's your highest traffic flow in town. In front of the city public works, they have a really nice curved landscaping. I can see when you get off the interstate, you come down at the front of that, there's a very nice sign, big signage, Welcome of Fulton, maybe some of your civic clubs on there. And then, oh, a huge aesthetic change of interchange of several different flag clothes representing, American flag, Kentucky flag, Fulton flag, whatever it is, fifteen, twenty flags. Just amazing when you come off as a visitor that got off the parkway into the town, they see this, and it's, you've got their attention from right there on the spot. So that's a good spot to start with, to catch your attention. They say, "Hey, this town looks great," before they ever get out of the door, before they ever get out of the car and spend their money in this town. They say it's a nice, inviting town. And I think first appearance is what I'm getting at. So anyway, there's a few illustrations of what I've got. And then I would like to see maybe more seasonal banners highlighting your main thoroughfares through your town.
We used to have those. We used to have those.
I haven't seen them.
Seasonal back, didn't we?
What's that?
Seasonal banners.
Yeah, we still have them all, and they just kept on and do.
Maybe that'd be a good thing, that I got illustrated here. I mean, when I travel and do things, I don't get to travel as much as I like, but when I go into towns, I see a town right off the bat that looks inviting and colorful, and that's what I'm getting at. It's just a, maybe if you have extra money, think about putting it to an aesthetic change in this town, wherever it may be. But highlight, focus on your main thoroughfares, your busiest traffic points, and almost flow the traffic the way you want them to flow, so they don't get off the main thoroughfares and get in the, get in the areas where there's not any business or commerce. And I would say, if they got off fifty-one, you've got the Isles of America, that may be the first corridor or first project you could fix. The second area, you've got a little money left over, do the Highland corridor and some banners that are seasonal. As you follow them around, wrap them around state line with more banners, get into the historic downtown district, you've got some really nice, inviting signs. I see those a lot of the towns that I've traveled through.
You know the trouble we have with those? I remember that, don't you, Bubba? Couldn't keep them up. I mean, the wind would tear them off to pieces, but I mean, I'm sure they improved them since then.
I have no idea, but I do know what I see when I go to other towns, and I know what I like, and that's it. An inviting entrance is what I'm basically. Of course, enforced code is something big on me. Charles Brandt's house right next to him, every day I look at it.
Ah.
You know, it's...
Yard smoke.
Yeah.
That's all I hear yet.
It wasn't the other day, but... Lumbers, maybe, that's, that was the thing that we were talking about, keeping up with the yard mower. I know the city of Fulton has a tremendous amount. Maybe they help to keep up, maybe they could use more lumbers for their budget. And a Trac-O, I've got a picture of a Trac-O, because I know that both cities, Fulton and South Fulton, has a tremendous amount of dilapidated houses that they're going to have to deal with at some point in time. Maybe actually the purchase of a Trac-O, even through, maybe, maybe a little more than the city of Fulton can handle, but the city of South Fulton has the same issues. They have several houses that are going to have to come down. Maybe shared services, you know, forty thousand, I believe, you buy a pretty good used Trac-O. I do realize there's not a truck and trailer to haul it around. You know, you can buy the Trac-O, contract that out for hauling, and maybe a department hits and have it tore down. Use the Trac-O, one of the public records officials, they're really good and handy. I know most of them, they're good guys, and they can work those things. They probably enjoy tearing houses down. And, you know, contract with limits or something, so of the haul off and removal. So there's ways of doing that to make that achievable, and probably get, it's money out, but you're probably getting a return on your money in the end. And then, of course, the Banana Festival. I know Christie's here, I've never talked with Christie about this, but it's, it's something that puzzles me a little more, and coming up in the future. Christie Rogers has basically spearheaded this project for two years without paying. Please don't kill me, and I'm sorry I put you on the spot. But anyway, what, what I was just basically trying to get at is maybe the city and tourism entities need to realize that the Banana Festival is running on, on a lot of volunteer help. And I do believe that what happens if the third year comes around and Christie says, "Guys, I'll give all I can, and we don't have a plan being in place." I'm just warning you, I've knocked her on the spot, and I'm so sorry, Christie, please don't hurt. But anyway, I'm just, just saying that, that, you know, that maybe we ought to look into that. And then the last thing was the capital, state, or even federal level, is earmarking money aside for basically the whole commission, the county commission, and everybody going to build hand-to-hand relationships with all state and capital on the main level. And I just know, what's that old saying, squick your will against the grease? And good relationships, it doesn't hurt. So I think that would be money well spent, too, for the longevity and... So, I think that would be money well spent too, for the longevity and grandeur and things that will put the city in the future. Those are just some options, and I just hope that, you know, pick one of them at least, and I'll be glad to help you with it. If I was married, I would be glad, glad to do, if I did something similar, sort of, downtown parks, I'm getting pretty good at that.
You're good, you're really good.
Yeah, anyway, sorry.
Okay? Next? Anyone else say anything they'd like to say? Yes, sir?
Jeff Watts. Uh, I live outside the city limits, but, uh, I do pay taxes on utilities and everything, so. But, uh, everything he said is great. Thing is, we've got, okay, with all due respect as far as the historical sites, when I moved my son Jacob down to New Orleans or just outside New Orleans, we went down to French Quarter, you know, lukewarm as borders they could be. I was having a blast. Didn't cost me any money, walk around, see all the stuff, but they couldn't care less. Young people couldn't care less about historical sites. We've got to have something in Fulton that is going to bring people here. Now, three trucks passed us in the course of this meeting. We've got I-69 that's gonna be coming down through here. Has anybody ever considered possibly contacting Loves or Flying J and putting a truck stop across from Walmart or possibly the Taylor Chevrolet building out there? You'd have a lot of people coming in who would get convenience food. They would get stuff at a convenience store, souvenirs, things of that nature. Now, I know some of the naysayers are gonna say, well, prostitution and drugs, but with all due respect, you guys have got that already. So, the thing is, is that we've got to have something here that's gonna bring people in. Like you said, to get people to want to get off the highway. Now, my wife loves Texas Roadhouse. There is only a Texas Roadhouse in Paducah. There's not one in Jackson. How many people could we pull to this city if we had a Texas Roadhouse or a Chili's or something like that that would make everyone from Martin Hickman, Union City, Mayfield, come here to eat? You get more people here, you get more revenue, because you've got more business, rather than trying to do this on the back of taxpayers. And you've got more people can then invest in the smaller businesses and start growing, which is what we've got to do. Otherwise, our population's gonna keep dwindling, those unlimited incomes are gonna have to move because they can't afford it anymore, and we're gonna be stuck. My son Luke still lives here, he's already wanting to go. I got people asking me, what's gonna happen after your dad, something happens with him? I really don't have a whole lot to stay here. Me and my wife would love to stay here, because the property I've got, I'm not gonna get you anywhere else. I mean, I'll be honest with you. And I like where I live. I like this area. But if there's nothing going on and we just keep on falling down, everybody's gonna pack up and go. So, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Uh, get the big restaurants, the chain restaurants that are not around this area, that can start pulling people in. I think the truck stop thing would be a great, great idea.
It's hard to get them here. They look, they're gonna look at your population, and they're gonna look at everything, and they're gonna tell you, you're crazy. We went into the keg, and we had a person come in and said, you're nuts. You won't do this, Phil, as you said. And that's what they're coming in and looking at. They're looking at our population, and you can't ever pull them in here. We pulled many big guys in here, and they just looking right away at our population, and they say, it's not feasible, it's not marketable, it's not everything. I mean, we just went by the gut feeling and did the keg.
Okay, well, then let's just give up now.
No, I'm not saying give up. I'm just telling you the reasons.
But on the truck stop you're talking about, you're gonna have big trucks coming through here. You don't have nothing. That's what I'm saying. If you tell them I-69's coming through here, you got fourteen thousand cars driving by everywhere. It's not the population that you're trying to serve. It's trying to get people here. We've got to start thinking, big mentality here, or else we're gonna be stuck like this years ago.
You know, I, I certainly agree with you, but the big chains and everything, that's the way they count where they're gonna go, the amount of people.
Has anybody in the city made a call?
Two hundred halls from Memphis to Paducah, they're kind of-
Our, our chamber director.
I called up the Loves, they're not gonna talk to me, because one, I don't have the property myself in them, and two, I, I am not you.
Well, the chamber director, she's constantly calling folks, trying to get them interested in the area, and that's an ongoing process. I have taken that, you know. Anyone else?
I heard that we've had a truck stop that wanted to move in on three oh seven, and the city wouldn't oblige them at all, so they said, the hell with you. I heard that Menards wanted to put a store in here, and that didn't happen.
No.
That Harley Davidson wanted to go to that old factory by the railroad, and we wouldn't give them a tax break. I didn't say this happened last year or the year before, and I should get confirmation of that, but-
I've not heard anything about that, sir.
There is interesting-
Yes, sir.
Mike, I just want to comment that I did-
Question, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cal McCour, resident of South Fulton. Um, just as a comment on that, talking about the Loves and those sort of things. I do believe that Flying J has contacted Randy Parker on a couple of occasions. Uh, Randy Parker owns the residence where I crossed the guest inn. And I think that was something that they have, um, been discussing, I think, over the past, I think, three to six months, about the possibility of purchasing his land in order to do that.
Very good.
Great.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Yes.
Back to the budget.
Yeah, back to what we're here for.
Yeah, hit your minder. Do y'all have any hard pickle on what was spent on the park, city park last year? For how much money y'all have budgeted out? You're gonna work through it.
Well, you used to, uh, Lacy's not here, and there's been money put back over the years for the city park, but she's not here, and I don't know what that meant.
Well, I would like personally ask the commission and the city to, I, I would allot some money to do something to the bidding garden park.
Okay.
And that sign is there, that you're talking about, he was the pass city commissioner. I don't think the sign been painted since the bidding brought it in.
Okay, I'm good.
And that park definitely, I mean, they, I mean, whatever y'all putting in the budget, budget some money there to make that park look better.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, please, Christie Rogers. Um, a couple of coaches just asked me when I came, would I please ask if we could get a new pitching machine out at the ball field for the youth? So, that's, that's it. It's nothing big.
Okay? Next?
Yeah, I wanna say something, uh-
Name?
Pickle. I wanna say I'm against, I'm against, uh, this recycling, because I don't want that Pike Parker brothers anymore money a month.
We all want you to either.
I'm already paying them sixteen dollars and thirty more cents a month. He writes enough, three fifty, that'd be ninety, eighty-one.
We're not gonna do that.
You're right. Well, I thought you was, but you put a thing in the paper, said you're going to be a recycling-
I brought it to our meeting, we said no.
You disapproved it?
Yes.
One other thing I would ask, how much were you paying a code officer?
Code officer?
Do you tell that, how much was his salary?
I don't have that right.
I can't tell anybody that.
I would call you too, yeah, 'cause I don't have that right with me. Next? No, I'm probably saying no.
I live here in Fulton. Um, you've talked and talked about not having a code officer. We need properties torn down. We need to make the town presentable to bring businesses here. And I would suggest, and that, what I'd like to see, is money put aside for a code enforcement officer, and then follow through when you cite these people.
Okay.
Okay.
Next?
Yes, Sam?
Hi, Dan Vogel. Just, um, as I listen to what everybody's saying here, I think we're all, or many of us, are concerned about the appearance of the community. And I think we need, uh, since we're on budget items, and that seems to be the purpose of this, I would urge you to try to do something along the lines of either purchasing a street cleaning machine, renting one, leasing one, or hiring a service. I think there are outside services that will come in occasionally and sweep the streets for you. Uh, I, I'm gonna tell you, I, I would just ask each, each person here to just leave town and come back, assuming that you don't live here, and look around through eyes that don't have scales on. I'm gonna tell you, you will be shocked at what you see. You really will. The appearance of the streets are terrible, the appearance of the, of the yards are terrible, and that goes back to the code enforcement person. It, you know, the, the town's appearance needs some attention very desperately. And the, uh, uh, we, we can bring all the people in the world, the signage that we talked about, and then try and bring other businesses in. And I'm gonna tell you, when people walk in and look around and say, wow, they keep on going, or get right back on the parkway. I urge you to please take, face the danger, particularly maybe at the exits to the parkway, because most out-of-town folks are gonna come by way of the parkway. And if we can help the state keep those things mowed, or, you know, whatever we can do to try to improve the entrances to the community, it's, I think it could make a lot of difference to us. I would like to urge you to consider that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else say anything they'd like to say? I appreciate everybody's suggestions.
Ms. Clara?
Ms. Clara?
Uh, my name is Clara Alexander. There's two things I would like to ask about a, a railroad station that people can come in and don't have to give, wait their in-laws up at nighttime, well, late to bring them in, or something like that. And another thing, it was, it's so many, y'all, y'all probably hear about the radio station. I used to call on the radio station, and I had so many people that's gone on in that talked about the radio station. I have a lot of them now still calls me and talk about the radio station. Whatever they could do, if they could get a radio station to, uh, to bring in funds, you know, bake cakes or something. And I can't do what other y'all can do, but I can, I can cook. I miss that so much.
Thank you, Ms. Clara. With on the railroad station, there's group facilities working on that, but there's not another place for the railroad station to be, except where it is right now. We've looked and looked and looked, and we've done this for years. I have been contacting Washington in the last two weeks. I have been contacting with the train manager out here in the last week. And, uh, EDP is helping get together some figures, so we may have to go out there and clean it. I don't know, clean it up. It, because they had told me that the restraints on their funds, they can't do anything at this point in time. And I told Mr. Stennis, I said, would you please keep that in mind, because this is desperately needed. Our police officers, our train, everybody's working together to try and make this work. And, uh, we certainly don't want it to leave, but, uh, that's kind of where that is right now. And I don't know about the radio station.
Yes, I, uh, had talked to Mike, I guess, maybe about two months ago. We own a house at four ten Cedar Street. It's right next to the railroad track. And it's got a whole lot of old tires, beer bottles. I guess it's been there for years. And so, Mike said he's gonna talk to Bubba about it, or someone, you know, where inmates be cleaning up. I don't know if it belonged to the railroad department, or, but it make our property look bad on that. Old trees done, uh, fell over and everything.
Bub, would you take that out, please, and see?
Actually, that makes, not only your property, but it, I noticed it a couple of days ago. And what made me notice it was the people that own the, own the property on Martin Luther King mowed their yard. So, that really made that part stick out. So, as you're crossing the tracks, uh, if you look to the east, you'll be able to, well, if y'all look to the east, you'll be able to see.
It's a lot of trash.
Yeah.
Yeah. Been there for years.
And we've been short some inmates too. A lot of this mowing and things done, but we hope to be able to, you know, pretty soon. Okay? Yes, yes.
Hey, just one thing, I'm totally for pity for, uh, I would ask you, as you start looking at it, make sure you keep something in there allotted for inmates, you know, in my opinion, and for what it's worth. Uh, we get a lot, and I work out of those folks, and I appreciate it. They've been out in industrial park the last two weeks, paying on the building, getting ready for some visits. And, you know, other than the materials that we had to buy, saved several thousand dollars of labor that we would've otherwise, you know, had, had to come out. Also, too, as Garrett said, well, go, and some of the others, the main thoroughfares as you come into town, you never know when people are here. I mean, I do, 'cause there's a red guy from Hopkinsville's here today. You know, the people see the grass as tall, and we hit some, some of the high spots a lot of times, but make sure we keep the inmate program going if we can. And I know it's a matter of feeding them and things like that, but to me, it's a small, modest debate to get the labor that we get. And I assure you, the labor that I've used has been well worth it over the last couple of years. Uh, and the other thing is, too, somebody touched on the lighting on it, you know, exits and things, you know. Been three or four majors that have sent letters trying to get that done, and it just hasn't gotten done. But when you start looking at mowing, just last year, the middle of summer, the grass coming up on the exits were so high, you couldn't even see the cars as you would come up to the exits, turn to come into town. And if it wasn't for public works and the inmates and those things, it wouldn't get mowed, and that's all state property.
Yeah, it is.
So, you know, that, those things are pretty important, because if we don't have those programs over here, uh, that, cleaning the streets, that's a big issue, but the other thing is, is the overall smoldering. And I mean, these guys do it as much as they can. You catch two or three days, rank it, puts it behind. So, I would ask you just to support that program as much as you can, because we have our citizens, you know, don't understand it. If you didn't have those guys, you'd have to conquer four more people, and you'd have to pay benefits, and you'd have to pay, you know, the wages and things like that. So, we get a lot, a lot of use out of it.
We didn't have inmates, we could not do it that way.
Well, I know it's a big issue, but you look over a whole year's time of feeding and things like that. You know, a, a four, five, six dollar meal for seven hours of the labor is, it's pretty big.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Any, yes, Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin?
Jim Martin. Uh, I got in on the tail end, not, um, talk, but we've talked before, so I'm pretty much thinking what we just talked about. And I really think that the city, uh, will act as, as leaders to, to get this strategic planning process going. Uh, you know, you tell stories about the Indians that spit in their hand, slacked whichever way the spit went, that's the way the direction went. We've been going that way too long, and we need some strategic thinking about all of these projects everybody's talking about. If you try to address these one at a time, you'll never have anything accomplished. So, I think you feed this committee with all the information that you've got and get them to move forward. Now, uh, I do disagree with turning this committee over to one group of people.
Okay.
It has to be comprehensive in terms of the makeup of the committee. And I have been involved in strategic planning before, which went absolutely nowhere, because you had the wrong people with the plan.
Okay.
And if you don't understand what the problem is, and if you don't understand how you got there, then it's not likely that you're gonna come up with any solution. So, I think the planning process is absolutely vital, but I think you gotta be careful about the people involved. Get the, the big picture of people involved. And somebody mentioned the chain, and what I don't know who was on there, but there's some good people on there, I know that. But they're not the only people. There's other people that get contributed this. And I think this commission, if you don't push that idea forward, then I think the commission itself becomes a barrier to this community goal.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, your name? Yes, Sam.
Sam Hancock. Um, just listening to what everybody said, I'm, I guess I'm taking more of a thirty thousand foot view. And instead of mentioning little specific things, I just wanted to give y'all something, some, some thought process. I want to congratulate a lot of accomplishments that y'all have made over the past year. Um, the, the, the process of doing away with the, with the occupational tax, things like that. I think y'all are taking steps in the right direction, because, you know, at this point, we know how the population of Fulton has gone, and city government has just kind of stayed the same size, and it's trying to do those checks and balances. But one thing that was tied to that occupational tax that I'm gonna make my point with, even though that's probably, hopefully gonna continue to be irrelevant. Um, I know there was one individual that was, you know, protesting somewhat whenever it went from one percent to two percent. And there was a, another, a city official at the time who, who had a position of power that told, told that individual, don't worry about it, just send in your fifty bucks like everyone else. This is what I would like y'all to think of, think about in getting away from. If, if we're gonna have rules, they need to be across the board. If somebody has to have permits to do something, everyone has to have permits to do something. If there's a certain tax, everyone has to pay that. Because what was going on with occupational tax is, is that anyone who was honest was sending their money in, and no one else was.
You're right.
And so, when you went to two, when you went from one percent to two percent, it didn't quite double the, the revenue. Why? Because, well, there was a little, everybody has their ethical breaking point. And some people went from one to two, well, I don't think I'm gonna send all that in anymore either. And there was no rule enforcement on it. So, basically, you're punishing everyone, the productive people who are trying to be honest,
Right.
are the ones who are, who are paying those things. Now, I know that, that specific example is soon to be irrelevant.
Mm-hmm.
But there's been other things with zoning, permitting, things like that, that, well, you know, they, they really can't do that. They don't, they don't understand, they can't afford that, whatever. It, it has to be consistent among everyone.
Exactly.
Because if you want to attract small business industry into the future, everyone has to, there has to be consistent, transparent- has to, there has to be consistent, transparent rules to everything. Uh, business, guys who run businesses can be very flexible, they can operate in any environment. Uh, unfortunately, federal, state, and as of recently, local governments have created such an environment of unknowns, that we don't know what's gonna happen next.
That's correct.
You know, a lot of this is more, you know, I guess, for federal government, state government than it is here, but this is just one example, where, where local government kinda played a role in that as well. Everyone needs to know the rules, everyone, and, and we can exist with that, but we wanna have something here that attracts business here, we wanna attract successful people here, we wanna attract a mentality where we want everyone to be successful, and to do well, instead of picking and choosing our winners and losers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah. Okay. I guess we're through.
Mayor, I.
Oh, sorry. Mayor?
I just wanted to thank everybody, I mean, it seems to me that if we live here together, and we pay taxes together, then we all have a say together in terms of how our city, our town, our business, it's not always prioritized, and so I really appreciate the information that you give us, great, great ideas. I just want, I think the process needs to be transparent, I think you need to be a part of it, you're welcome to be a part of it, and I just thank you for coming. It's, it's my understanding, Mayor, my recollection, we have talked about having a second meeting, and, uh, and I hope we do that, because we can take this information back now, and begin to turn this into dollars for planning purposes. I would like to come back to this place and say, here's what we're doing, to keep you